Good morning, everybody. So, um, I just recorded the full study stream for day fourteen. But the first eleven minutes or so were messed up audio. So I'm gonna re-record that part right now. So that I can upload it to YouTube and have a good video. So after about eleven minutes right now, you're gonna see me. The video is gonna suddenly cut, it'll still be me, but it'll be the prior recording. Cause I'm re-recording the first eleven minutes. So today's agenda, we're gonna start with some hand reading practice where we're gonna dive into my range versus my opponent's range. So we're gonna look at range v range action. Then we'll dive into lessons learned from a very thorough Black Rain seventy-nine article. It's called "How to Conduct a Poker Database Review." It's super thorough, but we're not gonna have. Excuse me, we're not gonna have time to get through the full article. We're just gonna get to the very beginning where we'll actually go into Poker Tracker four. We'll create a report. We'll use that report to find a good player that we might wanna emulate, a player that we might wanna learn from because they're a profitable player. And then at that point, we go back to the statistics tab. We start filtering, looking through their hands, looking through the decisions that they make to see if they're playing in a way that we can incorporate and improve our own win rate and improve our game by learning from those opponents. Alrighty, so let's get to it right here. I'll just cut to the chase. We have our hand ace-jack suited in the cutoff. The button's gonna end up calling. Now, you can see this is already filled out in the video. Once it cuts out and get back to the regular video, you'll see me filling all this stuff out. But for now, we'll just keep it here filled out, no reason to delete it and re-input it like it never happened. It is here. So let's see what happens in this hand. Remember, we're doing a range versus range. Of course, I have ace-jack suited, but what does my range look like as a whole? What am I, what am I opening with preflop? What am I betting with on the flop in the turn and the river? That's what we wanna figure out today. And what is my opponent calling with the whole way? So we open with the ace-jack suited. Uh, Frankie calls. Now, as you can see, he's the only caller. And Frankie is a sixty-one seventeen, a very loose passive player. Likes to come in with a lot of calls or limbs. Likes to see the flop, wants to flop something strong and, and just take money by being a passive player. These are the perfect guys to target. You want these passive fish in your games. So we're happy to be in the hand with a guy, especially with a hand as good as ace-jack suited. This beats every ace that he has, all the jacks, every kings, every queen that he has. All those suited connectors like nine-five suited and ten-seven suited. We beat all of that currently with our hand. Also, just as a range in general, our range is a really strong range. So let's see what that range could be. I've got two Flopzilla tables open right here. When you are comparing range versus range, you need two different Flopzillas, or you can use Equilab or something. But you need two different windows open. If you wanna open multiple windows, you just right-click on that and click another one. And then bam, third window pops up. But in order to compare range versus range, you need the two windows as well as this program right here. Hold EQ. It's a free program that comes along or that, that's, that you can use as part of getting Flopzilla when you get this. And so what you're going to do is, let's move this up real quick. This takes everything here and everything here and pits them against each other. You could have ten different Flopzilla windows open to look at ten different ranges or ten different hands, you know? You could look at different quality of hands, you know? Pocket aces, like right here, pocket aces versus pocket deuces versus six-seven suited versus king-queen suited versus ace-king offsuit. I mean, you could do whatever, just imagine, ten different hands that you can compare against each other with Flopzilla on specific boards right here. But anyway, what you wanna do first is click this, uh, communicate or connecting button and then hover over the window you want. So this window will be for us. So let's set our opening range. What is our cutoff opening range? Well, roughly twenty percent right here, twenty-point-one percent, two-hundred-and-sixty-six combos. It's this range totally, every pair suited aces, most offsuit aces, the stronger ones, as well as a lot of suited connectors and gappers right there. So that's our range. And if we go to hold EQ, you can see bam, there it is. Move this down now. So that's our opening range. And if we go back here, I simply remember up in commands, there's the range string output or just hit Ctrl, Alt, Delete. But this is the starting hand, so you just click that right there. Ctrl C, copy it, paste it in this puppy, put your notes up here. This is a hand I played as Wacky Wan on Carbon. I'm in the cutoff with ace-jack suited versus a button caller. My preflop range is my standard twenty percent opening range. It's possible I could have been, I could have opened wider in order to get involved or to get this guy involved in the hand, uh, to see more hands with him. It's possible, but we'll just keep me at my standard range. And you can see ace-jack suited is of course within that range. So this is our range. We don't know what our equity is versus his range yet because we haven't said it. Let's see what his calling range probably is. He's a sixty-one seventeen player, only nineteen hands, but we can give him a really wide calling range because he's on the button for sure. So if we go to his calling range, let's start two bet calling range, let's give him fifty-one percent. And then because he's ultra-passive, we'll probably remove a lot of these hands from his range later on, but we'll stick with that right there. Um, we'll say he's calling, maybe he's three betting with queens or better. Let's say he's calling this, calling that. I think this is what we originally set as his three betting range. So he's three betting, he's three betting ace-queen offsuit. Where's my suited? He's also three betting ace-jack. So we say that he's three betting here, three betting the jacks or better and three betting right there. Yep, yep, yep. Um, and then so fifty-seven point five percent and seven-hundred-and-sixty-two combos. Fifty-seven point five percent, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two combos. Great, right there. Oh, so now that we set his range and we've entered our range, let's look at the equities now, just range. Oh, whoops, we haven't connected it. Great, so you can see as soon as you hover over, the ranges are right there. Any changes we make to either one, ace-king-queen bam, pops up right there. Take those off. Let's just make the change here, ten, ten, ten. Bam, pops up right there too. So this is connected to all the boards. And of course, ten, 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 now pops up here, ten, ten, ten. So all these three, um, all these three, uh, programs or windows are connected now. Let's take those off, cause that's obviously not the flop. So preflop right now, we have sixty-one percent, you can see sixty-one percent equity versus the thirty-nine. You don't have to hit calculate, it automatically, as you make adjustments, it automatically calculates it. Uh, when you're using hold them EQ, hold EQ this way. So sixty-one versus thirty-nine percent. Let's see that we did this. Oh, nope, we have to see the flop first. So preflop, we're sixty-one, uh, we're sixty-one percent favorite, which is a great situation to be in. Even though we're out of position, if we hit a strong value hand, we should be betting three streets bam 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 for value for sure against a stationy guy like this. So let's go back to the hand. Let's see what happens. Ace-nine-six, heart-heart spade. So we just enter it on either one. Ace-nine-six, heart-heart spade. So on this board, we currently have sixty-six percent equity, which you could see, I entered that in. I entered in the ace-nine-six, uh, heart-heart spade board along with the thirty-four percent of their range. So this, the rest of this sheet, oh, I didn't mention it. I got this sheet, this is Split Suit's hand reading, uh, template. This is the third template, the range versus range template. Two days ago, in, um, in study session twelve, I showed, I showed you, um, the sheet that you used to range your opponent. And then yesterday's session, I showed you the sheet to use to range yourself. Now you're ranging both players in the hand. And of course, you could do this with hands you're not involved in, any hand that got to showdown. And you wanna figure out how these two players are playing against each other, how their ranges stack up against each other? This is great practice right here. So, um, my range preflop, their range preflop, all the equities right here. When the flop hits, this is what we're looking at right now. Of course, with my ace-jack, if we, if we got rid of this and just hit ace-jack. I mean, we're an eighty-three percent favorite, but we're looking right now at range v range action. So let's put that in, once again, sixty-six percent. Alrighty, and I think, uh, this is where, not I think, this is where I'm gonna cut back into the other video from earlier today. So you're gonna see me again, same exact pose, same exact clothes and everything. But we'll be starting the video off where I discovered the audio issue in the, in the first stream. And then so now that issue is resolved and then we'll pick up on, um, you know, pick up where we left off. Thank you very much. Alright, so, uh, let's continue on. So, uh, we got those in our range flush draws, we're betting open in a straight draws with a seven-eight, sure, why not? Gut shots, what is that? Uh, the ten-eight. Oh, no, we, oh, yeah, gut shot. I would say we're betting that right here. Yeah, it's a little bit of equity and we want him to fold mostly. If we hit our backdoor or our gut shot, we could get some value there. Two card backdoor flushes with a spades. Uh, a lot of those have pairs and stuff, so a lot of those are already included in our top pair and middle pair stuff. So let's just, let's keep that off, we won't necessarily tag that one there. But we'll keep all the combo draws in. So our range is now at, uh, seventy-two percent of what we had originally stated. So because we have a stronger range, we got rid of some of the weaker stuff. Our equity is a little bit better now at seventy-five instead of sixty, whatever percent it was. So you hit Ctrl, Alt, T, like I showed yesterday, and that pops up the new range, the new filtered range right there. The flop was ace-nine-six. Your range is equity. So before we make our bet, our range is equity was sixty-six percent, okay? And his was thirty-four percent. Great. And then now our newly filtered range, seventy-two point four percent and hundred-and-fifty-seven combos. So this is just a, a good way to, uh, to go through and then track your progress as you go. You can give somebody this and they can filter back through and see how you, um, and I'm gonna be sending these out with a end-of-week email. Okay, thank you Kimberly, I appreciate you letting me know, uh, audio is good. I'm gonna be sending that, this out in the weekly email. Oh, thanks for ordering the book as well, that's awesome, thank you Kimberly. I'm gonna be sending this out in the audio email so that you can go back through and copy what I do or just like look at what I did and do this for yourself for sure. So their flop range. So this was us, we put the filter on and everything. Let's take a look at theirs now. So they decided to call us, what are they just calling and not re-raising with at this point? So let's see, what was their stack size? A full stack to start, to start, oh, almost a full stack to start the hand with. So sets, hmm, I think sets might on one street because they have position, might slow play us just a little bit here. So I can see a call right there. Two pairs, if they're still playing sets, they're still playing two pairs. Top pair, all these weaker aces, yeah, they're weaker. We definitely have ace-king, ace-queen in our range, which is ahead of them. So let's say they're slow playing, at least for now. Uh, pocket pair below top pair, yeah, middle pair, I would say weak pair, yeah. Now, all these no-made hands, a lot of these are gonna be included in the flush draws and the backdoor flush draws. So let's keep them pretty wide for now. Let's, or let's, let's keep these out because they will be included later on. Flush draws, they're calling, open in a straight draws, gut shots, they're calling, two-card backdoor flush draws, they're calling for sure, yeah. So a lot of this stuff, they are definitely calling all of this. So we're just taking out the no-made hands that have no kind of backdoor equity and no kind of connectedness, you know? Like king-deuce suited of diamonds, they're probably gonna be folding in this instance. They might decide to continue on, but for the most part, let's assume they're folding those hands. Alright, we just got a. Router nineteen-seventy-six, thank you very much for the follow router. So, uh, let's say that they're folding. So we're gonna narrow it a little bit. I mean, we've got to assume that they're not calling every single time on the flop. They've gotta have some restrictions to their range here. So sixty-two point seven percent, which is pretty good. Sixty-two point seven and four-hundred-and-seventeen combos. Four-hundred-and-seventeen combos now. With anything, uh. They're calling with any equity and, uh, because they're in position and they're stationy in general. Ooh, do-do-do, so. And in case, uh, just in case you don't remember, oh, Modal one is following, thank you very much Modal, good to see you buddy. So Ctrl, Alt, T is what I hit to bring up this newly filtered range. I'll Ctrl C that to copy it, but in case you need to know, uh, it's right here, range string output. So this gives you your newly filtered range. And then bam, that's that newly filtered range now. If you read this, it's not gonna make, you know, it's not gonna make any sense to you. You can always highlight it, copy it, and then in here, insert it into the range and it'll, you know, it'll select that range here. But, uh, you know, paste it there for, for completeness sake. Okay, so we have a commanding lead right now. Uh, they have thirty-three percent, which means we have sixty-six percent equity. Because we narrowed the range a little bit, our equity dropped from that seventy-five down to sixty-six, which is still pretty darn good. We're happy with this hand right now. Uh, we're happy with the call. So the seven of spades hits, what does this do to equities? So many windows. Alright, so now just on that card with the ranges that we got to the turn with, we're now a little bit higher, sixty-five percent. This does complete a couple of draws that he had or possibly had, also gives him another set with pocket sevens. Uh, so, you know, but in general, there's only one more card to come. We have a very good hand, a very good range against his wider range. So things are looking up right now. So. Seven of spades, whoops, our equity is sixty-five percent and thirty-five. So my turn range, uh, what can I say about my turn range here before we go through and filter it? I still like my hand, oh, good morning, Profish Poker, good to see you. Uh, I still like my hand. Should bet. No reason to be scared of the seven. So let's take a look at our range. Seven hits, what are we not betting here? Or I should say, what are we betting? Betting our straights for value, betting our sets, betting our two pairs, betting our top pair like we are now with the ace-jack. Pocket pair below top pair, let's take a look at those. Because they called preflop, I'm not gonna necessarily just put them on an ace, I'm not gonna play scared, you know? So I really like the double barrel with all of those, uh, good pocket pairs there. Middle pair time, um, so hmm. Hmm, jack-nine-ten, I think they can all be betting because this is a station, the board was pretty wet. We could possibly throw out one more bet with the middle pairs, I would say. Let's actually possibly filter this. Nine-eight has a pair plus an open ender, I'm good. Ten-nine has the gut shot, jack-nine, let's take jack-nine out. I'm not a big fan of that hand right here because ten-nine, we have an eight for a straight. So we have a bit of drawing equity still. Jack-nine is just a little weak, I would probably check in this instance right here. So just filter that a little bit. These weak pairs, eight-seven and pocket eights, oh heck yeah, those are betting. No-made hands. Uh, well, those will pop up in some of the flush draw filters that we have below. So let's, let's not keep that in, uh, in, in our range here. Flush draws, we're, we're betting again our flush draws, we might as well barrel it. I mean, you have a flush draw, you wanna keep that pressure on the opponent, hopefully get them to fold. If they have something good, like if they have an ace but scared of the flush or whatever, you know, you wanna keep that pressure up. Actually, our ace is gonna fold here to our flush draw? No, not at all. I think with the flush draw, I think what we're getting to fold is, uh, any nines, any sixes, any sevens that just hit a pair possibly. Even though they are calling station, I think that's what we're getting to fold against this calling station. I think they're going all three streets with an ace. But the good thing is, we have a pretty good ace, ace-jack, and he has all, we'll look at his range in a second, but he has all those weaker aces. He did two pair on an ace-nine, ace-six, ace-seven, but I still think it's a good bet with the flush draw. Uh, let's see, no flush draw, we don't want to. The gut shot, what is that? Oh, all the different tens for an eight ball, we want ace-five even for the, uh, under gut shot? No, let's not say that one. So let's keep gut shots, whoops, let's put gut shots in, but let's filter this out a little bit. Shabang, you're gone. Ace-ten, well, it is a pair plus a gutter and that's in our top pair range anywhere, anyway. Uh, king-ten, nah, let's take that out as a gutter. Well, no, we would, we would bet it at least as a double barrel bluff, we would. Queen-ten, jack-ten as well, pocket tens, definitely. Yeah, so we, we actually only took out one thing, that tiny, the under gutter. Holy cow, look at that, we're continuing, we're double-barreling here with ninety-six percent of our range, which is a hundred-and-forty-five hands. Now. There's our range right there that we continued on the turn. So it doesn't really matter right now. Our equity with this range is at sixty-five, but let's see what our opponent's calling range equity is right here. Because, uh, because, and I talked about this yesterday or the day before in the study stream, as you're aggressive, you can better narrow your opponent's range through the streets. When you're just playing calling or passive poker by calling and checking a lot, you don't know what your opponent has because they could just be betting as bluffs or for value when you're checking to them. Or they could just be checking behind, whereas maybe they don't have the top of their range, you don't want it, you, you can narrow those out. But then all that middle stuff, all those flush draws, all the no-made hands, those are all still in their range. So you have a better chance, a better, uh, a better opportunity to narrow their range by being the aggressor, by betting and raising. So that is key to do. So let's look at their range now. Uh, oh, what did they do? Actually, what did we do? Two-ninety, that's a good size bet. Um, I knew I was betting, so that's why I already narrowed my range. But two-ninety is a doll, yeah, a dollar forty-five, yeah, exactly two-thirds pot is what I bet right here. There are way more combos, Profish Poker says there are way more combos of ace-x that we want to call than we want to fold. Yes, because we have the ace-jack, but you're right about that, Profish Poker, there's so many more that we want to call, you're right. But at the same time, we only have a flush draw. We would like all their combos of ace-jack to fold because they currently beat us. So I would say that if I'm, because I'm looking at my entire range here. If I do have the flush draw and I'm betting, it's because I want them to fold in general, you know what I mean? Um, but if we just look at our specific hand, ace-jack, sure, I want all those different, all those weaker aces to call as opposed to, uh, as opposed to fold to give us value. So yes, you're right about that. Overall, in the hand, we're going for value, but when I look at range versus range, I want them to fold. Cause I have plenty of bluffy stuff. Actually, no, if I have a flush draw, I want them to fold is what I mean to say. Um, as a range as a whole, our range as a whole beats theirs. So we have plenty of, uh, pocket pairs, plenty of even nines in our range that currently beat their drawing range, yep. Sue, oh, we bet, what does he do? He just calls, what does he call us with here? So at this point, if he calls, there's ten dollars in the pot, not if, but I mean, his call brings ten dollars to the pot. He has eighteen dollars behind, so we can possibly take out some of those nutted hands that are going to be raising here to try to get the stacks in. And if that seven completed some kind of a draw, let's say that, uh, you know, it completed a straight, he had the ten-eight. Well, he'd be raising here to, as a little bit of protection and for value, um, against us having a heart draw quite possibly. Um, or even having a ten for ourselves and an eight coming and chopping the pot, you know? So there's a lot of reasons for him to raise here, but he just called. So let's take the straights out of his, uh, range, let's take a look at them real quick. Eighty-five, it's the low end, but still, he's gonna be raising those to get his stack in at this point, especially on the wet flush drawy board. His sets, um, I think the sets at this point are definitely raising as well. He's not calling with those, I think we can take those out of his range. Unless he's just a super station and only, uh, bets or raises when he has the nuts or a flush draw, or I'm sorry. Or if he has a full house as opposed to just a set. But even though he's super passive, let's just treat it like he'd be going for value with his sets as most players would. Um, his two pairs here. Ace-six, ace-seven, ace-nine, nine-six, nine-seven, um. Those aces, I think the aces at this point, there's no reason for him to put us on a set, like a set of aces or a set of nines. I think his two pair, he would probably assume that he's better, um, than my ace-king and my ace-queen and my ace-jack of course, if that's the kind of hand I have. Um, so let's go ahead and let's filter out some of these out of the two pairs. He would definitely be, he would definitely be raising these hands. I can see him calling with just these because they're the under two pair and he's passive. But I think he'd be raising, um, I think he'd be raising at least with the ace-nines. So let's take, whoops, let's take the ace-nines out of his range right here. Cause I'm gonna assume that he's gotta be raising with some stuff, right? Earl's, why is he in the hand? I mean, you wanna get value and wanna make money, he's gotta be raising with some stuff. I think he's calling with these weaker two pairs, possibly the ace-sevens, uh, he's calling as well just because he could be scared that we have an ace-nine or a set ourselves. Yeah, let's put those in his calling range, but just take out the strong, the top two pair hand. Now, all these top pairs are definitely calling. Pocket pair below, tens, yeah, he could be unbelieving, he still has a gutter with that, let's keep that in. Middle pairs here. Um, let's see here, all these different nines, kings, hmm. He's weak, the nine-five has a draw still, pair plus a draw, nine-eight for sure, he's calling with the king-nine. If he thinks we have absolutely nothing, um, and he is a station, he could be calling with a lot of these. So let's keep those in his range. The weak pairs here. We have eights, well, some of these draws will be kept in here. So we can keep the weaker pairs out, like a king-six and a king-seven. If he has a flush draw with it, he will be calling, but just in its pair strength, possibly not right here, not to the double barrel. So let's say he's folding those, no made hand. Now flush draws calling, mm-hmm, no flush draw, and the gut shot, what was that again? Oh, because that seven hit tons of flush draws out there, so he's calling his gutters. Alright, so we didn't narrow him that much. What do we, eighty-one point five percent, three-twenty-two, not bad. So we've taken him down so far through his actions on the turn from seven-hundred-and-sixty-two combos down to three-twenty-two. We've removed more than half of his combos. So that's good. If we played passively here and just checked or even check call the flop and then check the turn, we wouldn't be able to narrow his range at all. By betting, being aggressive, we've narrowed it. He's stationy, so he is calling a ton here, uh. Oh, thirty-five percent. Lots of hands in his range right there. Yep, thirty-five percent still, even though we narrowed him, we're still at sixty-five, thirty-five at this point. So river comes, it is a miracle four for us. Um, what, fifty-eight of spades, hit a straight flush, uh, yeah, thirty-five of spades as well, but whatever, those two hands that beat us currently. As of right now, we be happy with this hand. So he called two-thirds pot on two bets or on two streets. How much can we get out of him now? Let's see what I do. My guess is roughly two-thirds, I might be betting three-quarters at roughly seven dollars and fifty cents. Because he showed passivity and called on two streets already, I might be going for max value here. Okay, seventy, yeah, exactly two-thirds pot, seven-sixty-one, which I'm good with that, for sure, I mean, or three-quarter pot, which I'm good with that. Let's see here, oh, four of spades. So the four of spades hit right there, let's look at our range. You can see when I enter it here, it just comes onto this board here. So the four of spades hits. Now, before any play happens, before any action happens, what is our equity? Four of spades hits, only sixty-two percent. Seems really odd to me. He doesn't have, he only has two combos that beat us, right? Oh, okay, no, we're looking at our full range. My bad, uh, in, in my head, I'm still thinking my hand versus his range. We're looking at our entire range, so our entire range wins sixty-two percent of the time. So range versus range, we've got to be betting here, we've got to be going for value. Our hand itself, of course, is a winner, hundred percent of the time, we're good here. We've got the near nuts, only two combos out of his, um, three-hundred-and-twenty-two combos wins. Uh, so that's a ninety-nine point nine percent lock on this hand, we've got to be betting. So, uh, let's see, we bet that three-quarter pot, what is betting right here? As far as what he should be thinking about our range? Well, we don't have any straight flushes, flushes are betting, straights are betting, sets, uh, totally, sets are betting right here. It's a backdoor or runner-runner, uh, the four didn't complete the open-ender. Uh, if, if it came a five or a ten, we might not be betting, uh, we not, we might not be betting our sets and just check calling at this point. But we are definitely betting sets. Two pairs, ace-nine, six-five, ace-four. Um, I think we could definitely bet two pairs because he has a lot of weaker aces that just came along for the ride with the top pair hand that we could be getting value out of. I think two pairs deserve to be bet. Now, just straight top pairs, hmm, I think all of these, I think it's worth betting as well. I think it really is, he could be calling easily, uh, with the nine the whole way that was unbelieving. Uh, a queen, pocket queens, pocket jacks, pocket tens, I didn't wanna raise at any time. Uh, didn't three-bet preflop and didn't bet or didn't raise on the flop with the ace-high. Yeah, I think our top pair is getting a ton of value out of hand. Um, of course, we lose against the nine-six suited that he called with preflop or the seven-six, uh, or the nine-seven even. All of that stuff we lose, and we lose against straights, but he hasn't really shown us any aggression yet, telling us that he has a made hand that can beat the top pair. I think top pair, we could go for some value here, some thin value. Although with top pair, I would be betting a little less. I'd probably betting two-thirds pot, I'd probably. Although with top pair, I would be betting a little less. I'd probably betting two thirds pot. I'd probably keep it the same. I upped it, of course, because I want more value out of the guy. Uh, but let's keep those in my betting range. Pocket pair below top pair, I think it's time to slow down at this point and maybe check call a small bet. Or check and hope he checks behind and does not have an ace. Middle pairs right there, um, I'm not down with betting those triple barreling with a middle pair on an ace high board when. There's a straight draw and a flush draw hit, even though it was backdoor. Weak pairs, no, so I am saying I'm gonna cut down my range big time, seventy percent from the turn to the river, right here, um. Now, with this range, seventy-two percent equity, but let's see what he does and see what he makes that play with here. Or, you know, we'll, we'll narrow his range down as well. Um, so at this point, yeah, we have seventy-two percent equity. Seventy point one and one hundred and one. Before that hit, well, we're sixty, sixty-five percent equity, okay. Um, a river card, we have sixty-five, they have thirty-five, so yes. Definitely worth betting, so our betting range right here. Great, love it, love it. Um, so our betting range, we definitely narrowed it down. So what does he do here? So he just calls us, so, um. What is he calling us with? Let's, let's, let's think about that for exa-, uh, for instance, before we see what his final hand is. Let's see if we, uh, successfully put his hand in our range. Stationy again. Calling any pair, I think, I think, uh, any pair plus, I should say, not any pair. Uh, top pair, plus. I don't think he's calling with just a nine at this point. I'd say top pair plus. So let's narrow his range down. This is what we expect to be getting value out of. Um, straight flushes, they're definitely not just calling, they're raising right there, shoving all in, you know. All of his flushes are calling, his straights are calling, his sets are calling at this point, uh, any two pair. I go, yeah, definitely two pairs are calling, top pairs are calling. Now, pocket pair below top. It's only the tens, but he could definitely call with those, just thinking that we don't have an ace the whole way and we fired with, you know, pocket eights or. Fives, I mean, who knows what he's thinking? Maybe we fired with a king, queen, the, king, queen of hearts the whole way with his pocket pair below top pair. Middle pairs, I think eventually he's gotta be folding, so let's say that he's folding his middle pairs. Um, it would be really nice if he called with all of these, um, but I don't think I'm getting value three streets out of them, but. I've still got to bet. I want to get value out of all these weaker hands and we have the nut flush. We're not worried about a full house on this board. We've got to be betting, um, and unfortunately he folds some of his hands, you know, so let's say mid pair and weak pair below, he folds. Whoops, didn't do that right there, um. Did I get that accurately? Turn range, three hundred and twenty-two combos. Eighty-one point five, okay. So now pocket pair below top pair, we'll say he'll call with just those six combos. So one hundred and fifty-six, fifty point three. And the range we give him. Is this good stuff right here? So you could see how long, um, hand reading by street by street actually takes you. I mean, we started, geez, it's been forty minutes or so. Just on this, um, but anyway, yeah, so that's the river range right here. As it stands, by narrowing him down, we have a, uh. Uh, we narrowed him down to just this stuff. Range versus range, we're winning fifty percent of the time. I think that's worth a value bet when you think about range versus range. Our hand in general, hundred percent of the time winning, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time winning, we've got to value bet. So let's see what he had here. Ace queen of clubs, is that in his range? Whoops. Oh, I said he would be three betting that pre-flop, so, uh, he had. Obviously, he's pretty darn passive. I guess he's not three betting the ace queen pre-flop, so. Might, the hand fell out of the range. I mean, we got value out of a top pair, good kicker, um. But we got lucky in that we hit that river, we, you know, drew out on the guy, uh, so we were value, but we thought we were value betting on the flop in the turn. Uh, the only time we value bet was the river. We were, you know, giving him value the whole way. So his passive play was actually making value from us right there. Um, it was a good hand reading exercise. I think, I thought we did good. Even though we ultimately failed in the end, um, the hand itself, we made a good play, we got value out of the guy. We bet when we thought we were ahead. If you look at his entire range, sure, if we add these two hands in at the beginning. Um, we still have ultimately, if everything played out the same, we still have fifty percent equity versus him. Range versus range, we have fifty percent equity, so it's still worth a value bet right now, um. So I, I, you know, I can't, I can't fault my play at all. The only place I made a mistake is the hand reading exercise by not including ace queen suited in his pre-flop range. If ace queen suited is there, ace king or ace queen off, probably ace king and maybe he would three bet or maybe just call. And then maybe he would call there. I mean, he might have a super, super narrow three betting range. Like I said at the beginning, only have nineteen hands on the guy, but, uh, you know, it's not a bad effort right there. We got pretty close and we got value out of the guy on this hand. Great, that was some fun stuff. I'll save this and send it out later to you. Wow, forty minutes going through one hand. I hope some of you stuck through that. Uh, let's see, what have we got here? Oh, where's my agenda? So the agenda, next up, we're gonna go through some lessons learned from a very thorough Black Rain seventy-nine article. This article is crazy. I'll send you the link or you could just go to blackrainseventy-nine dot com. It's a twenty-fourteen post, how to conduct a poker database review. Let's pull that up real quick lag, so you can see, um, holy cow, look how long this puppy is. Wow, and a lot of, a lot of comments, you know, this is obviously a great post. We are not gonna have time to go through all of this right now. Uh, but, so, we'll just, we don't need to look at that. Let's go through my notes on the post. The hand reading practice was a failure. We're now eight out of twelve. Just making a note. He was like sixty-one sixteen, right? Something, something along those lines. Think I still have the hand open, sixty-one seventeen, yeah. So it's super passive in general, so that's a good note for myself in the future. If somebody is super passive, put the ace queen, put the ace king in their pre-flop range. Um, I hadn't seen any three bets yet, so there's no reason to really think that they would be three betting those, although he should have. I would have in his, in shoes, in his shoes, but whatever. Um, so this is something that, uh, uh, Black Rain says in the article. A database review involves an in-depth analysis of your play and that of others in order to improve. And that's what we've been doing this whole week, but up until now, we've only been looking at ourselves, uh. Check Aaron, thank you very much for following. I appreciate it. So, um. What you need to do is you need to use your database to analyze the biggest winners at your stakes. These are those really irksome opponents I've discussed dealing with in the past, uh, scientifically, thanks for following, I appreciate it. Uh, so those irksome opponents, the guys that just stay in far too long, or not too long. Stay in when you want them to fold, you're c-betting, you're double-barreling, you're check-raising, but they just do not believe you and they stay in. They end up taking down pots, they end up showing up with hands that you didn't think possible. They end up three betting with five eight suited. Catching two pair to crack your aces, that kind of a thing, um. Uh, the players that just take chances, but then they stay in the pot when they have the best or they think you're full of it. Those are the players that you wanna analyze, uh, you wanna look for those winning players and try to learn from them. Learn from their stats, learn from seeing their plays and, uh, adapting those plays into your game. This'll help you to see what you're doing, that's, that what they're doing, that's so profitable and you can adapt these plays or strategies into your own game. So we're gonna go through, um, he, what he does is he starts with his reports tab. Um, I don't often do that. I just hit the statistics tab like you guys have seen quite often. I just bam, go to the stats tab right there. But, um, he's gonna go to the reports tab and instead of going through the rest of this stuff, we'll just hit the reports tab and, um, you know, see what he does. Alright, so let's remove the filter. So this is my year to date right now, um, oh, as a wacky one, nope, as frisky, missky. Um, so yesterday was an ugly day. I lost three buy-ins in the cash games over s- six hundred, seven hundred hands or something. So you can see year to date, I'm down to negative, uh, hundred and ten dollars, but you know, it's just a downswing. I'm like six buy-ins down total, but whatever, I'll bring it back up. In new time, I am positive. So this is where I often do most of my, uh, most of my work, uh, in. Uh, within Poker Tracker Four in analyzing my database, but when you wanna start looking for opponents to, uh, to learn from, to analyze their game. You wanna start with the my reports tab. So go to my reports, let's click on a new tab here. Uh, no, we don't need to save the changes, new report. Let's call it, um. My finding good opponents. Report. Now, you'll wanna select the all players report. We don't need to add stats, common stats. I'll show you what that is. All players report will bring up a report like this that brings up all the opponents that you're playing against. So hit the finish. Now, this report just has all my opponents, but we're gonna add some stats to it to try to, to try to get a, you know, oh. Gotcha. Thank you very much, Profish. Uh, O'Carra just, hi, just tuned in. Where can I find updates of the analysis days? Uh. I don't, I'm not sure what you, what you mean, O'Carra. I've been sending out daily emails to my mailing list and you can join the mailing list by going to. Uh, www dot smartpokerstudy dot com slash twenty-eight days. Once you join the list, you can get the archives of all the emails I've sent out, so you could see all the things I've been saying in the emails, um. In the emails, I just recap the day that we just studied and everything, um. Yeah, the study streams, yeah, and then you can also watch all the study, study streams on my YouTube channel, so. Uh, I'll just tell you right now, I won't type it in, on my YouTube channel, as well as just within Twitch, go to that little videos. Go to this little videos link up at the top right there, and then you could see, once you click on that, all my twenty-one prior study session videos are there. So you can check that out right there. Uh, thank you, Profish. I appreciate it. So this is the reports tab. Let's create a new report right here. So, um, the first thing, the report automatically just lists player, cause that's what we chose. Let's add some stats now, so, um. What you do, instead of going through and, uh, you know, finding your stats, I just type in like a key word out of that stat, you know, so my currency one. Hands played, so we can see, we've already got some players listed, the currency one and the hands played. Uh, this, of course, isn't good enough to really. Uh, find the regs. I mean, we might even, we might have an idea. You can see already over a thousand hands. This guy, one thousand N A, um, he definitely has, you know, a good amount of profits won, um. So at this point, he's possibly a good guy to, to look at and you can sort this list by just clicking up here. My currency one right there, ooh, I spank myself, making some good money. Uh, let's see, who's another name? Jeb Ariel, I recognize that name. Yep, yep, yep. So there's some good winners and stuff, or you can sort it by hands, but let's add some other things. Pre-flop raise. Vipipin. I'm just adding some random stats right now. Um, you guys saw earlier, hmm, in this very first study session or even study session number eight. When I showed you all my different stats that I use to track and I look at, um, I'm just adding some basic stats right here that everybody looks at. Uh, to, to get a good idea of our opponents. Um, let me see. Great, yeah, so right now we just got some, some basic stats to look at and these stats kinda give us a general idea of how our opponent plays. We can sort it by anything. Let's see who's the most Vipipinist. Oh, let's move that up, so Vipip. Whoops. Wrong one. Vipip should come before pre-flop raise. Okay, there we go. Who is our most Vipipinist player? Ah, but then it shows just one hand right there. So what we wanna do, um. In order to sort through this a bit more, we don't wanna see every single player, right? On this list, I mean, these guys, we only have one hand. I saw one hand with this guy. He lost his full stack and bounced out of there, you know. So it's not gonna help us in any way. Let's go to filters right here, add new expression filters and, um, insert. Now, you can go columns, hmm, I just use stats right here. So let's take a look at, um, let's go by, uh, let's go by hands, let's do that. Scroll down to hands. Hands right there. So now you can use simple, uh, greater than, less than, equals, um. Uh, I don't know, buttons, filters or whatever, expressions, I guess is the, the term. So I wanna see everybody with hands over three hundred. Let's save that, save the changes. Now, once it's up there, this will filter this information by whatever I said. So now over three hundred, great. All of these players, I have over three hundred hands. We can sort it by hands. There is me, frisky, missky, but one thousand N A, sonic blast. Hap Kotuck, Wacky Wan is my other persona on carbon right there, um. Yeah, I spank myself, winner. Over three hundred hands. Let's do a little bit more filtering. Let's look for players who possibly, um, let's see, three bet filter. Yeah, okay, let's look for some more aggressive players. Let's say we think that our current, um, our current three bet percentage is too low. We're just three betting for value. We wanna get this up. Let's look for some opponents who have, uh, just, you know, higher three bet percentage, some winning players. And how are they making so much money when they're three betting so much? What positions do they three bet from? Whatever the case is. Let's look for somebody over five percent three bet. Ba-bam, ba-bam, okay. Great, so we've narrowed our list even more. So everybody here, over three hundred hands, everybody also over five percent on the three bet. Look at that, fourteen percent, three hundred and twenty hands. How is he making so much money? He might be the kinda guy to look for, um. It is, of course, a small sample, three hundred and twenty hands, so he could be ultimately just a losing player. I've only seen him, let's say I've seen him at. Four different tables at eighty hands a pop. It's really not a good sample to go on. What you wanna do is look at the players with just the most hands that you have. In general, those are the ones that you wanna target to see what they're doing right or wrong. Now, as you play more and more at the stakes. Um, which I am doing at the twenty-five N L stakes, I am getting just more and more hands on all of these opponents right here this year, um. So as it goes on, these, these reports will be more valuable as it goes. Um, so some of you have been playing your twenty-five N L stake or fifty N L or ten N L, whatever it is, you've been playing there for fifty thousand, a hundred thousand hands. You might have five to seven thousand hands on a player. Once you do this, you'll find the players that you have just a ton of hands on. The winning players with decent looking stats, go ahead and start diving into them and figure stuff out. So by looking at this, we have eleven hun- eleven hundred hands and he's won a hundred and sixty-three dollars. That's four, I'm sorry, uh, six buy-ins at twenty-five N L. So he's probably a good one to dive into. Let's just look at his stats in general. Twenty-five, twenty, good, solid tag. Getting to be a slightly lag player, getting up there. Three bet at nine percent, that's interesting. Attempt to steal overall at thirty-nine percent, so he likes to steal. He c-bets the flop at fifty-six percent now. This means. C-betting at thirty-five or so percent is when you hit the flop. You either have an open-ended straight draw or better and top pair or better. He's throwing in lots of semi-bluffs as well as just bluffs and he might be doing a lot of c-betting in position as opposed to out of position. So we might wanna look at his c-bet game. His fold to c-bet is seventy-one percent of the time. That's a little bit, um. Uh, flop honest right there. So we might wanna look at this at as, uh, you know, in position versus out of position, folding to c-bets. So he might have some weakness right here. Um, total AF and total AFQ, this is just, uh, you know, measurements of how aggressive they are in general. And it looks pretty good. Uh, what is mine at? Oh, I'm not, oh, that's right. So in this filter, I lost my stats because I am, uh, filtering at over five percent. I guess my total three bet is somewhere below that. So I think I do need to get more aggressive and that's another reason why you wanna look at the stats of the winning players, see what they're doing and try to emulate them. No, I'm sorry, not try to emulate them. Look for ways that they are making. No, I'm sorry, not try to emulate them, look for ways that they are making money, look for good decisions that they're making, and then adapt those into your game. Because you don't want to automatically find, oh, this guy's a winner, I should be a 25, 20 player. That's not the way it goes, he might be being a, he might be a 25, 20 player, but it could be a lot of his post-flop game that makes a lot of sense that he's making money off of. He might be just getting super aggressive in the cutoff and the button only, and that's what puts him at 25, 20. Every other position, he could be super tight, so don't just look at stats and say, that's what I need to be, because that's not the way to go, you don't know that this guy, because our sample is only limited on our experience, or is limited by the amount of spear, experience we've had with him. He could be a crap player, he could be, uh, 100 buy-ins down at his stakes, and he just gives away money. His stats might look good, but he could just be losing money, you know, we just, we just don't know, because we don't have his database, we only have our own. But let's go ahead and take a look at this player, and see some of the stuff he's doing. So we'll go back to the statistics tab, this is all the hands for the year, we'll pull him up. So you can see, I've already looked through his database and his hands before. So, now, this is the normal stats report that we've been looking at this entire time. It shows by the player, all the different stats that I look, like to look at, to compare, to look for frequency issues and mistakes that they might be making. Big winner, good big blind per 100, in the spots that we've seen him in. I doubt he's that profitable in general, but if he is, we definitely want to learn from him, you know? Um, so all of this stuff, earlier, we talked about the three-bet, or not we talked about, I filtered through the, with the three-betting over 5%, let's look at his three-bet stats. Uh, three-bet preflop right here, alright. So you can see, this is the button, the cutoff in MP. For whatever reason, in the MP, he likes to three-bet over his, um, early-position opponents. Uh, there could be a couple of reasons for that, one might be because he, what's the sample size? Uh, 190 hands. So it's a pretty good amount right there, 11% of the time he's three-betting. He might be three-betting over all of those early-position players who like to treat under the gun as a steal. Um, in six-max games, if you don't play six-max, people steal from every position. And some players really like to treat the under the gun as a steal spot because it looks so strong. This guy's raising first to act, there's still five players to act, he must have a good hand, that's what some people think. So they treat that under the gun as a steal spot, he could be targeting those players and three-betting them to take their stack. Not stacked, to, to take their open, along with the blinds, you know, so just three-bet bluffing from MP. And of course, up here in the button, 13% three-bet means that he's definitely doing it, um, uh, you know, as a bluff, as a semi-bluff to take away pots from maybe a lot of cutoff opens, maybe he's three-betting those guys quite a bit. Um, and then of course, we can see in the big blind, he three-bets 8%, small blind 10%. Now, this is a really key stat to look at right here, or a key stat to notice, because lots of players, they treat the small blind, um, when you come in for a raise in the small blind, uh, or come in for a three-bet in the small blind, it looks strong because no matter what, you're not gonna have position post-flop. It looks like you really like your hand, so this could be the kind of player that, um, uh, just really, really likes to use the small blind as a three-bet steal position there. So let's take a look now, um, more filters. Preflop, we want to see the spots where he did throughout the three-bet, let's see how profitable he is when he's three-betting. Because these numbers show profitability in general, maybe that three-bet total of 9%? Gotta look again, I just can't remember, uh, whoops, too far. 9%, okay, yeah, so that three-bet at 9% could just be overdoing it, maybe he's losing money with his three-bet, so let's take a look. Now, this is just throwing out the three-bet, we don't know if he folded to a four-bet, whatever might have happened. Look at that, so when it comes to three-betting, he's making a pretty good amount of money right here. 2,000 big blinds per 100 hands every time he three-bets, so he's obviously making some good decisions. Whether it's a good decision preflop, or he's making good post-flop decisions, that's what we need to dive into. Let's take a look here, um, let's, let's filter this a little bit more. Preflop, folds, folded to a four-bet. Let's see when he three-bet and folded to a four-bet. Of course, it's going to be negative no matter what, right? But he is three-betting and then folding mostly from the small blind and the big blind right here. Uh, so let's look at his small blind hands, who is he, who is he three-betting? I open. He three-bets right here, so his sizing is a little bit over three big blinds. He's probably hitting like a, a, a full pot-sized bet, or 3/4 pot, or something like that, to get that 238 exactly. A fold, I come in for the four-bet, and he folds, okay. So we don't know what he had right there unfortunately, but we just do know that, hey, this one time, he treated the small blind as a steal. King-ten suited, oh, it's me again. He three-bets the same amount again, 238, um, and then I $7 c-bet again, and he folds, great. Or not c-bet, four-bet here, and he folds, good, 6-5. Now, 238 once again, and the guy comes over the top and he folds, so that's something to note on this player, that 238. Um... At 25NL, 2.38 SB, three-bet. Gets folded to a four-bet, three times. Now, that's not really, wh-what we're gonna do is we're gonna filter for not folding to the four-bet when he five-bet or just called. And then we'll see if maybe the sizing is a little bit different, because he might have a sizing tell there. 238 might be his bluff, uh, three-betting, uh, sizing, bluff three-bet sizing. So once again, he folded, final hand here, raise, that was me again, ooh, 250 now, he upped it, interesting. And he's still folded right there, okay. I'm making these notes now because, um, if I notice other bet sizing stuff in the future, I'm not gonna remember this stuff guaranteed. I've got a terrible memory, uh, for, for stuff like that, so I gotta make a note. Just the way I play, baby, okay, so now, that's out of the small blind. What is he three-bet and then folding here out of the big, or out of the button, maybe he three-bets even less? Oh, he lost 2 bucks in 225, interesting, so, um, because he's out of position, he's, he's sizing his three-bets a little bit more. In the small blind, on the big blind, not so much, so he's facing a 62 cent, and he makes it, um, an 8 big blind three-bet. Oh, and then a cold four-bet, so he's gonna fold a lot to cold four-bets, as most of us would, um, right there. Yep, so that was a 8 big blind, let's take a look at this other one. Where he three-bet, was this 2017 from under the gun, let's see what his raise first in is, 25%. So he could, could be a wide range, so he could just be bluffing right here. And 675 and fold, so, okay, 5 big blind three-bet, uh, not 5, 9 big blind three-bet. So, we've already seen right here, hey, I don't, I can't read Russian buddy, but thank you for that comment, I heal, I hope. I hope that means, uh, you're cool. Uh, more filters right here, so this is when he three-bet and folded, let's see what happens when he three-bet and called. He three-bet and then called a four-bet. Let's see if we see any hands, oh, nice, so when he's three-betting and calling, he's obviously the winner, he's calling with good hands. We've seen ace, queen, aces, and that one right there, uh, let's see how this hand played out on the button. Well, let's start with the small blind first, because that's where we started before. Ah, three-bet squeeze, and he made it 334, so it's a little bit bigger now, of course. Obviously, so a little bit over the 12x, uh, 12, 13x is what he makes it, 13 big blinds. Now, who knows what he flopped right here, who knows what he has, or, or is this the ace, queen hand? This is the ace, queen hand, the first one, okay, so we know he has ace, queen, and he three-bet with ace, queen off in this instance. 450, check call, because I guess his opponent could have, uh, pocket aces, pocket king, so he's, uh, just playing it a little snug. Check, and then 15, what do you do? Oh, and then you call all-in at this point, you're not giving up, understandable. Ace, king versus ace, queen, nice, okay, you got lucky on that flop right there. So that was a call with ace, queen, who knows, he might be tired, look at this guy's, uh, four-bets at 20, uh, 20%. Maybe he knows that he's, uh, four-betting quite wide, so he called with the ace, queen, because maybe he's four-betting ace, jack, and ace, 10, um, pocket nines, pocket eights, that kind of a thing, that could hit a top pair and crack him, it's possible. It's one thing to keep, keep in mind, so now, against a smaller three-bet, I'm, I'm sorry, against a smaller open, he three-bets even less here. And that allows him to, uh, to call four-bets even cheaper. So no action, okay, understandable, three hits, so whether he's just repping, repping the flush, repping a big card, uh, just trying to bluff with squaddush, I mean, who knows? Guy calls, okay, and now he follows up with another bet, so what was that sizing? 4 into 677. Uh, on the turn, he bet 60%, 59%. On the river, he followed it up at 50%, so his bet sizing was a little bit less, um, he's either, oh. 702, and he only, he only had 567 left, yeah, interesting, hmm. Well, and it worked, yeah, so my guess is, because, my guess is, he wasn't even looking at his stack size right there. Um, and then he just bet 702 to try to push him off of his hand, uh, and he didn't even realize that his shorts, that he was a, such a short-stack player, is my guess right there. So who knows what he was going through, but we can see that he sizes his bets, uh, just bigger out of position. Well, we're not sure what he bluffs with when he does, when he makes those plays, let's look at this, one big blind. Ooh, aces, let's see what he, let's see how he sized it with aces, maybe he sized it less with pocket aces. Peanut raises, 188, so he's out of position, nope, same thing, $1.88. $1.88 again, great, so same bet sizing with pocket aces, which is good. He's making himself a little bit less predictable, I think, with a bet like that. And then, oh, it was a shove, um, of course, obviously, this hand just plays out the way it is, pocket jacks, we can see that. Um, as a short stack, that, that play's not surprising right there, open in the four-bet shoving with jacks. Standard. The booten. So, standard 3x from the, um, uh, from in position from the button, okay. And then he calls, now in a 4-3-4, that's of course a pretty tough board to hit, for sure. But Dora He, which is, I think, the player that we saw him call a three-bet from before, uh... I think, call a three-bet from before. Uh, probably doesn't respect him, and then check shoves right here, so I guess ace deuce has a straight. Pocket fives hit a full house, pocket threes flop the full house, so, um, yeah, I mean, that's a really strong bet. My guess is it is a, my guess is it's a flush right there, a full house, I think, would be going for value, um... And just calling and then getting it in on the river, possibly, because he's in position. If he would have just called, um, that would be 650, so it'd be 13 plus $24, and you only have 13, he would possibly just call to get it in on the river with a full house. But a flush, I could see on a paired board, just trying to get it in now, to get max value out of, out of an overpair that doesn't have a full house yet. Yep, yep. Um, Rob Gag, could he have ace, queen with ace of hearts? Um, on that prior, yeah, it's totally possible, it's totally possible he could have that, um. So, but right now, I'm, you know, I'm not trying to range the opponent, I'm just trying to get a good idea, a good sense of how they approach their three-bet game, definitely, but yeah, you're right about that, he could have that. Let's take a look at one more filter, he called, but he raised three-bet, what about making the five-bet? Three-bet, five-bet, six instances totally profitable when he does it, queens, nines, tens, and pocket aces right here. Let's take a look, what happens here? We didn't see a hand, actually, we don't need to see that one right there, let's look at this hand. Look how it's already 630. So, he three-bet, now... End a goal. Why did he not? Just because it's smaller, so he just hits the 3x button. Roughly, right, because he, we saw him raising to 225 to 9 big blinds exactly. But that's when he was facing a 3 big blind open, it's less than 3 big blinds, so he sizes it smaller right there. Now, Itz Fuzzy is definitely a loose-aggressive, hmm, tight-aggressive, getting to be a slightly loose-aggressive player. 5%, three-bets quite a bit, what is this three-bet? Um, oh, he's a value three-better, he likes to bluff later, in later position, but 5% and 5% in the small blind and big blind, he's a value better when it comes to three-betting. But, um, uh, 100, or 1,000 NA decides to, it looks like, just get it in right here. So he probably thinks that this player is capable of, uh, four-bet calling with ace, king. Um, maybe, you know, ace, king, maybe even ace, queen, and then jacks, tens, and maybe even nines. So he just says, screw it, I've got pocket queens, I'm getting it in here. And let's see what Itz Fuzzy ends up calling with, because he might have a pretty good read. So you gotta overpair right there with the pocket queens, king, queen, wow. Called any four-bet with king, queen off. Wait a second. Any four-bet. Oh, four-bet plus range was king, queen off, okay, there we go, yeah, wow. In a cash game, BB, four-bet. Call all-in with king, queen off, I've got to remember that. I mean, why is he calling it off at that point? Because... I mean, he's got 725 in, which is, hmm, a little under 1/3 of his stack, at this point, the guy shoves. I'm just folding, I know he has king, queen off, be, sure, if he has pocket jacks, I could catch a king or a queen, but why risk a full 100 big blind stack with that? I wouldn't at this point, not with the king, queen off, king, queen suited, possibly ace, king suited for sure, um, but not the king, queen off, but that's a good note to have, so if I ever get involved in a big hand with Fuzzy, or with Itz Fuzzy like that, um, I've got a good idea of what, of how I should respond, for sure. Yep, yep, and then maybe, don't really four-bet, uh, three, five-bet bluff against Itz Fuzzy, because he could call off if I'm five-bet bluffing with, you know, queen, 10 suited or something. Maybe not, because he can call with king, queen off and have me crushed. Alrighty, so that is how I would go through and start analyzing my one opponent. So first off, I showed you how to use my reports, um, and then you can add any stats you want, and then with those filters, you can filter it by whatever, um, whatever stats that you want to try to look at and narrow, narrow it down on opponents who you know are winning players right there. Once you have a ton of hands, you can even, um... You can even just put this in as a stat, you can see the big blind win rate right here. When we look at win rates, I spank myself, pretty good, small sample, 400 hands. But yeah, you could just look at win rates right there, and just go by the winningest players. If you have a lot of hands on a player and a good win rate, they're worth taking a look at. You don't have to copy them, it's not like I want to be a 28, 24 player. But if the plays that they're making make sense, if it seems that they are winning because of these plays, it's quite possible, he could be a good guy to learn from, for sure. Alrighty, well, thank you very much, everybody, for attending, I really appreciate your time. Had 5, 15 people on the stream today right now, that's awesome, thank you all very much. And I'm, I'm gonna come back in about an hour, hour and a half from now, with one more stream that's gonna wrap up this week of studying, uh, PokerTracker4 filters. Alright, thank you very much, everybody, I'll catch you later.